Okay, good evening everyone and welcome. Want to call this the meeting to order. We'll go ahead and start with the invocation. And then after the invocation, if you want to please stand if you're willing and able, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Herman.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide our council members as they meet and discuss matters with regard to our city. I pray they shall choose to do that which is moral and rational. I pray that their motivation in everything they want to do is the good of the public and not their own. I pray that they will be able to solve our city's problems and make good policies that address them, help them to be competent and excellent in their governance. Most of all, I pray that anyone present who does not know your son Jesus will get to encounter him, surrender their lives to him, and live a life that glorifies you, God. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to the Salvation Army and Faith Alliance, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Herman. So we'll go ahead and start with the roll call and make him, welcome Adriana, your first meeting, we're happy to have you here. So if you can please accept for the record that all of the council are here.
So noted.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the minutes for the city council regular meeting of March 17th, 2025, and except for the record, the minutes of the police personnel retirement board meeting, March 4th, 25, the arts and culture commission meeting, March 4th, 25, the minutes for the board of adjustment of January 14th, 2025, the minutes of the historic preservation commission of January 27th, 25, and except for the records, the minutes for the community service advisory board, February 27th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next are the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims from March 21st through April the 1st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. The meeting agenda approval, any changes to the agenda at all?
Madam Mayor, we have no changes this evening.
Okay, any changes here?
No.
Okay, so if we can get an approval for the, a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no special presentations. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that the council would like to pull from the agenda, cons- consent staff or the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move for acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? So if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, where are we here? Okay, public comments, we do, I do have a few speaker cards. I'll go ahead and start with those, and if you can just make sure if you come up and speak, if you can state your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes if you can. I first have, is it Carl Clampett? Carl.
I am Carl Conley Clampett residing at 594 West Racine Loop, S.K. Ranch, Casa Grande. Mayor and council members, I would thank you for, and the planning zoning members for removing that plan to narrow Florence Boulevard. No matter if it was your own realization that this concept was a bad idea, or it was us, we citizens of Casa Grande, through our voices here at these meetings, or writing on CG chat or next door, that made you make this decision, again, thank you for removing it from the concept plan. As for the rest of the conceptual plans for Florence Boulevard, I think they are also bad ideas. The welcome to Casa Grande monument at the, at or near the I-10 has merit, but the rest of the plan is flawed. Non-residents of Casa Grande getting off the I-10 at Florence are probably looking for gas, snack, or lodging. Knowing where they are is nice, but I don't think that they are going to be awed by the seldom-used, wide sidewalk spiked lanes stamped and painted CG logos at our intersections. We don't need benches for our unhoused population to relax on, or artwork, or lots of trees to be watered and trimmed, installed by us either. Existing and future businesses can do their part by making their establishments and surroundings more attractive to the newcomer passing by. The city's job is to give a safe and ample access and egress into and from those businesses, not to make the Boulevard pretty. Concept planners expect the construction to take over 10 years to complete. I will shop elsewhere if I have to, to avoid construction areas for 10 years, and so many of those existing businesses may go out. We also have no idea on the estimated cost I and the rest of us will have to pay. Please, if you feel you need to spend the money, widen or complete widening of some of our metro thoroughfares. Spend money to attract more restaurants and stores that we need. People are attracted to Casa Grande because it's more affordable than Chandler, Mesa, or Phoenix, not because we have a pretty main street. Casa Grande has attracted businesses to our west side, offering new jobs. Solicit more of them to join us. That may help us fill the glut of rental units that we have overbuilt. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Okay, I have Peter Encinas.
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. My name is Peter Encinas. I reside at 1070 West Falls Canyon Drive here in Casa Grande, 85122. I'm with a ministry called Minutes with God Community Network. We're a nonprofit group of local Christian rappers, spreading the gospel through alternative music, rap, and hip-hop, reaching the youth and the young adults. And we've partnered up with our, with the Texas Roadhouse. We're having an event out there, May 17th, so next month, on the 17th. It's like a car show, it's a fundraiser event, and we would love to invite, you know, one or more of you council to come out there and bless us with your time. It's a two-fold invitation. We'd love to have you guys out there and bless us, you know, spiritually with a prayer, the word of God, maybe a little message if you guys could. And also, on the, on the natural side, you know, you guys as leaders of this, of this community, of the city, it would just be a joy to have you guys out there and, and, and show us your support for this, this ministry we do. You know, we're, we're local here, and we're now reaching out to, to Tucson and Phoenix. We're getting calls to go into California where the Wild files we're at, even New Mexico and the reservations in Navajo Nation. So this is a fundraiser, we're trying to raise the funds to get these groups out there. We, we need that money to, to go out there. And while you're there, if you guys do make it, you know, they're blessing us there with some baskets at Texas Roadhouse to raffle off and raise this, these funds, and you're welcome to just come through, and you can drop a check in the, in the box too if you want, with cash, got some gold coins, silver, you know, whatever's going to get us there to, to reach these lost souls. At the end of the day, it's, it's anybody. One, wherever we got to go get that one lost soul, you know, leave the nine-nine for the one. That's what we do, and we're here in Casa Grande, serving, this is our base, and we love it. With that being said, on the second note is that I was here for the study session in regards to the, the less fortunate and the homeless in the, in the parks, and I know we're talking about getting some new ordinances and whatnot. So our, our ministry is the one that's out there giving them food and giving them water. And so we've kind of made a relationship with them. So we love to, to lock arms with you guys and partner up whenever these ordinances are created, and let us go out there, you know, before you guys are with, you know, with you guys, and minister the word of God with love, and then kind of tell them, well, here's the word of God, and here's the word of the city, you got to get moving, can't hang down here, you guys, you know what I'm saying? Like, we've been here long enough, you know? So we would love to, to partner with you guys and go out there and serve the community, serve the city in that way, not just the Lord, but we'd love to do that with you guys. So I'll be here after, if you guys want to get any more information on, on that stuff and, and join us, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgibbons, Mayor Pro Tem Herman, members of the council. My name is Mike Cruz, head of government affairs and public policy for Lucid Motors. I'm here in official capacity today to recognize and take the time to honor a good partner of ours, a good friend, and a great employee of this wonderful city, and that's Mr. Paul Theis, as he gets ready to embark on his retirement. I'm sure you guys are going to do a wide array of different activities to honor him, and I just wanted to make sure I'm here in present to be able to do so because at the next meeting I'll be traveling. So I do want to say on behalf of Lucid Motors, Paul, thank you very much for your service to Casa Grande. I don't say this lightly, I, I say this because it's something I experience every day. I have the opportunity to travel this country and be able to work with cities of all sizes where we do businesses across the states, whether it's a service center, studio, facility, headquarters. I interact with tons of cities, different councils, different mayors, and every single time I am out there, I'm reminded how amazing this city is. From the staff to the leadership to all the electeds, something is special about Casa Grande that needs to be recognized because of the work and the commitment to deliver not just the quality customer service to us as a business, but for the work to uplift the voice of the people. Paul, we put you through a lot. We probably ran you to retirement with all the work we do at Lucid Motors and the continuous building, but on behalf of the Lucid family, we sincerely thank you for your service, always being accessible, working with us to identify pathways and solutions as opposed to barriers and obstacles. You've done an immense job to help us to get to where we're at and the phase of development we're at, and it couldn't have been done without Mr. Theis and his team. So, Paul, thank you for your service. We wish you the best in retirement, and we wish you all, as you move forward, and just understand that the work you've done here will continue on. This facility and the work we're doing is a legacy project that will continue to benefit not just the residents of this community, but in the background, it's always people like you who help make this possible. So mayor and council, it would be ridiculous not to say that the work, the work, the employees, the family you have here are incredible. Very lucky to be here and blessed to be able to be part of this organization, but also to call Casa Grande my home. And on a personal note, Paul, it's been a pleasure working with you in a personal capacity was when I was vice chair on the board of adjustments. You're always very professional, courteous, and always willing to work with us and guide us as we navigated the, the city's business. So, thank you, Paul. Thank you for the team, for all the work you do, and continuing to serve and represent not just the voice of the people, but industry and businesses across this great community that deliver quality jobs and opportunities for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Oh, are we clapping? Thank you, Mike. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Wow, what a follow-up, and I will say that so far, I've experienced the same thing with the people that I have interacted with here at the.
Can, can you give us your name and address, please?
It's Robin Johnston Dean, and I'm out of, are out of Colorado. So it's 7380 East 8th Avenue in Colorado Denver. So thank you, council members, for letting me speak today. I am the government city affairs manager for Metronet Fiber Optics, where we have over 300 communities that we provide 100% fiber. We are investing $26 million into the Casa Grande community to, to bring fiber to the area. We are recognized and ranked by industry leaders and such as Netflix, PC Mac, gaming companies, and also with Reader's Choice Award. An independent study found that fiber increases the home values by up to 14%. So, but unfortunately, there is a downside to that, and that's the construction process. So I'm here to educate people on what Metronet does. First of all, we just met with Mac earlier today to discuss what's going to work best for the residents. But in general, about 30 to 45 days before we enter an area, we'll send out a little letter, and then seven to 14 days prior to that, we send out a little construction postcard. And this is one thing we might go ahead and change or make, adjust it into certain areas because we usually put out little yard darts that go into all the lawns, but sometimes that's a nuisance and they blow away, people don't see them. So what Mr. Mac had suggested is that we put construction signs into each of the big areas, so it'd be like a big warning sign, and it would say who we are and how they can contact us. So finally, we also have some door hangers, but again, some of the times those can be a nuisance, they blow around, people don't see them. So again, we're going to work and do, address that individual subdivisions moving forward. We do rank 30% higher in our customer service compared to our competitors, and I believe that's because we have a construction-based website where residents can reach out to us. We try to be extremely transparent, and one of the things that we really highlight is that funneling people into our construction website where they can learn about easements, there's videos, there's FAQs that they can pull up just to learn our process. And probably one of the biggest and most important things where they can access us is there's a huge yellow button that is, says, "Ask a question." Residents can go on there and they can put in their information, and they can tell us who they are and what their question is. So if, you know, Suzie has a sprinkler system she wants us to know, that is a boots-on-the-ground one-way, two-way communication to our teams. So they can let us know, we'll come out and address, okay, where is your sprinkler system? They may have a furry pet in the backyard, so we can address each, each residence to alleviate those concerns. Additionally, restoration is huge, so that when residents put in their information, they will have a ticket, it's formatted, and they have a direct line to us. So I'm going to stay after, if anybody has questions, concerns, I'm going to pass out my business card, share our customer service number, anything people may need to move forward as they have any issues with construction process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. So we are on I-1.
Mayor, city council, staff recommends the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Hensel Phelps Construction Company of Phoenix with a total bid of $4,199,000. Staff is requesting additional contingency of $504,000. This contract will provide construction services for the Quartzon West Regional Sewer Lift Station, which is part of the Quartzon Forest Main Project. City Casa Grande needs additional wastewater collection infrastructure to support commercial, industrial, and residential developments planned for the west side of the city. This project is for a new lift station to collect and pump wastewater from the west side of the city to the existing water reclamation, reclamation facility. Hensel Phelps was determined to be the lowest qualified bidder after bid reviews. With that, what are your questions?
Any questions?
No.
Comments? So Dwayne, what, what is the timeline, once this is approved? What, what is the timeline for this?
I'm going to let Mac answer that.
Okay.
Mayor and council, we're still kind of working out that, that official timeline. Our big concern is, we're, we're looking at about a 500-day timeline. That's very non-typical for a lift station. Usually a lift station is a nine-to-a-12-month process. There's some big challenges in supply chain related to electrical equipment, specifically backup generators, which are required per Arizona law on those lift stations. And so we're working on trying to make sure that we can get those as soon as possible, and for that reason, we're looking at probably a 500-day timeline. That being said, we could potentially have the lift station up and running with rental generators if needed sooner than that date. Obviously, that would just have additional cost impacts on project, and that's why we're kind of asking for that additional contingency should that, that need arise. We don't anticipate it, but, but we're trying to plan for the, the worst-case scenario, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other questions?
I guess I.
Sure.
Continue on with that one, though. Because I did see on one of the adjectives that it went up to 353 days. So you're saying now the 500-day is due to the lead time on the backup generators?
Correct. Yes, correct. We would be able.
So we're still looking at, at having installation and everything else complete within the first 353 backup generators, potentially rentals until 500 days, once we get the final.
That is correct, yep.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay, so, oh, sure.
I would like to add, we don't anticipate needing it that soon. We, we looked at some of the potential needs for developers in that area. We were pretty confident we're not going to need to do rental generation, but we, we wanted to make sure that that was an, an option if we needed to.
Okay, but we want to delay the completion of the lift station itself. We finish all the construction, just be waiting for the backup generators?
Correct, correct, yes, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, Adriana, if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5761, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from the Hensel Phelps Construction Company for the construction of a wastewater lift station, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing the transfer of budget authority, and authorizing the execution of a contract.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5761 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so if we can go ahead and get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so item I-2, back to you, you two.
Excuse me. Staff recommends the mayor and city council approve an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement to allow ADOT to administer a roundabout project at the intersection of Florence Street and Ash Avenue. Due to increasing traffic related to new manufacturing jobs in Casa Grande, the need for safety and traffic improvements have been identified at exist, at the existing intersection of Florence Street and Ash Avenue. For this reason, this project qualifies for federal funds. The proposed roadway improvement includes the construction of a roundabout, including curb ramps, crosswalks, sidewalks, at Florence Street and Ash Avenue. This project would create attractive entry point into the city, improve traffic circulation, and address safety concerns. With that, what are your questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Matt.
I got a couple. Number one, this has to go through ADOT, is that due to the fact of it being a federally-directed spending?
Right. For construction with federal funds, we have to have ADOT administer it. Sometimes we can do the design, but for sure, if it's construction, ADOT has to administer it.
So they handle all that, that end of it there. And then the other question is roundabout versus stoplight. Maybe talk about that in that area and pros and cons?
Sure, there's a number of reasons why roundabouts in certain situations are better than a traffic signal. There's, roundabouts have proved to be safer than traffic signals. You know, you don't have the head-on collisions, the right ankle collisions, so the crashes in a roundabout are a lot less severe than an intersection. There's the other cost of maintenance. The maintenance costs for a signal outweigh the cost of maintenance for the roundabout long-term.
And can we put a big piece of art in the middle or something?
I was thinking of a statue of myself.
Let's see what we can do. Thank you, Dwayne.
Okay, go ahead.
So total estimated cost was three and a half million, plus or minus?
Yes.
And we're responsible for the design, correct?
Yes, it's, it's 100% designed already.
It is, so we've already gone through that, it's all paid, all good, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? All right. So Adriana, if we can get a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5763, a resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Department of Transportation and the city of Casa Grande to administer a roundabout project, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of an agreement by the city manager.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve resolution number 5763 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Romo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, that's it then. So we'll just go ahead with reports. Anyone would like to, how about Becca, if we start with you?
Sure, I just wanted to say that we had a career day at Cactus Middle School, and the city was very well represented. We had fire, police, public works, and community service, as well as Councilman Edwards, whose hand was sore by the time he was done, because he was signing so many different things, so we really appreciate that. The kids loved it, it was a great event, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was a busy week, so we had dinner with the CAP board directors. It was a good dinner, bad information, but it was good. I mean, there, there are pauses there. I mean, they are truly working with the upper basin states to try and get us what we deserve out of the agreements that are in place, so that was good. Caesar Chavez dinner was great, huge turnout for that. I, I was really impressed with the number of people that were there and supporting that organization, and, and the number of scholarships that were passed out was just phenomenal, that was great to see. And then I also got a chance to go to the Public Safety Day, Public Safety Night, it was kind of misnumbered. Pretty good turnout, really impressed with the number of agencies that were there. Border Patrol showed up with their horses, Eloy Fire and Police were out there, Pinocchio County Sheriff's, all of our local groups, but it was a good turnout. And I tell you what, if you ever get a chance to go watch the K-9s perform, those dogs and those handlers are outstanding, amazing, amazing creatures. That was it.
They didn't put you out there?
No. No, not after the, I was thinking about it, but then after I saw the first guy get hit. I'm good, I don't need that.
Okay, how about you, Bob?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, how about you, Sean?
I'm going to leave it to Matt. I was going to say about the Taco Fest, but that's up to Matt. Tended a few golf tournaments and stuff like that, and had a St. Anthony's Golf Tournament, and great turnout there, and Taco Fest, I'm going to leave it to Matt, that was a great, great deal, so.
I'm going to leave that to Matt. And, and Caesar Chavez, of course, it was wonderful, and the 65 students that received the scholarships, recipients. This week we have the international drive-through prayer that's going on, started today, and our mayor did the welcome, and so that will be going on the 7th through the 9th, and sort of, and on the 9th at 12 noon.
And so, that will be going on from 7th to the 9th and sort of in on the 9th at 12:00 noon. And it's at Trinity Southern Baptist Church, where that's been held. Other than that, I'll pass everything over to Matt.
No pressure, no pressure. So, yeah, the Taco Fest was great. The weather was much better than last year, very nice out, good entertainment, had almost 1,700 people, tickets sold, more than 1,700, lots of tacos, lots of drinks. And a really neat thing this year was partnering with the plein air competition for the city. So, a lot more people got exposed to the art and the artwork and got to vote on it. And I talked to a lot of participants and they said, and since I was wearing a taco hat, I got to get my picture taken with a lot of people. And, but it's interesting to ask for people coming. A lot of them came, a few of them came because they were in the plein air competition. Some people just like tacos.
Some people just wanted to see your hat.
Yeah. Yeah, but thanks, everyone. And it's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Advisory Group over there at the Chamber of Commerce that did a great job pulling that off again and great, great music and entertainment. And we had local groups and folklorico and bands and it's great. And the library, I want to compliment, they had the bookmobile out there and their display in there was all about like Hispanic cooking and salsa and tacos. So, it was really neat. They did a great job. So, good cooperation just shows how the whole community coming together makes something like that happen. April 19th is the day of shredding with the Youth Commission at First American Credit Union and E-Cycling. That'll be from 9:00 to 12:00. There's a great commercial on the internet that I've seen, thanks to the PIO Office for making that. Good job. And very creative, so I appreciate that. So, 9:00 to 12:00, April 19th. And then, this Saturday is Terminus Days Downtown. So, Terminus, if, for those who don't know, is one of the, is the original name of Casa Grande. When the railroad ended, it was very original and that's where it terminated. So, Terminus was the name. And I'm looking up the details here so I can give them accurately. And it begins at 9:00 AM downtown and there's tours leaving from there about 9:30. And they have buses going out, one bus going to the mine, the Snorr and Copper, the oldest Arco Mine on this side of town, and then the other bus going to Kaywood Farms. And it's all free. And, but just check the website, CGMainstreet.org, because there's some dress code stuff if you do want to go on the tours. Also, there'll be a lot of the craft activities and stuff downtown, starting at 10:00. There'll be storytelling, there'll be events, there'll be booths. So, it'll be a lot of fun celebrating the five Cs of Arizona, which are also the five Cs of Casa Grande. So, it'll be a lot of fun and tells a lot about our history here in town. And lastly, good weekend, I did do a lot of that, but scholarships, right? The Caesar Chavez Foundation did a great job. And then, the Rotary Club had their denim and diamonds out of the Pinal County Fairgrounds. Great success. I want to thank everybody. I was involved in it. A lot of you guys came and participated and donated and it was great. And the Rotary Club netted over $80,000 for our scholarship program for the next few years. And got to dress up in denim and diamonds and we had a band outside and the weather was pretty good for us, yeah. A little bit of wind at times, but it worked out really well. So, I just want to thank the community again for coming together and supporting our youth, which is, I think, what we all want to do. So, with that, I'll yield.
And as you all can see, it's been a busy couple of weeks, that's for sure, with all the activities. So, no, the Rotary was great. You know, Larry, I know you're part of that committee and Matt and you guys have worked so hard. Yes, I know Dave Keen was over there serving too. So, thank you for everything you did. It was a great event and especially when you're there supporting the kids and the youth. And so, for those of you that attended the Caesar Chavez, you know, this is, I've been on that committee from the beginning and we're in our 19th year. And so, I'm glad that you all were there to see, you know, this event is a little bit different. We have the actual students there and presented their certificates. We haven't had a dinner since 2020, so we are excited to come back and have a dinner and award the, you know, these 64 seniors from all over Pinal County. So, thank you for doing that. Sorry I missed the public safety event. Again, so much going on that night and had other commitments, but heard it was a great night and had some friends that went. Our budget retreat is coming up, April 16th. I know our staff is working really hard, trying to, you know, just kind of manage through all the numbers and recommendations. So, everyone be ready to, you know, put your thinking caps on and spend some time all day on the 16th. We are, and you know, we, I've talked about this several times, the Childcare Task Force. I know, you know, you know that, you know, we have stakeholders that are, that are coming together to try to identify some of the concerns and solutions on the issues that we have with childcare throughout the city. So, there is a survey that, I think it's on the Chamber, is it on the Chamber website? I think it's on the Chamber website, right? If you have any, if you are an employer and if you can get on and take this survey to give us an idea of some of your employees, friends, family and some of the concerns that they might have with childcare. This week is, actually, we, I did a proclamation, it's the week of the young child. And so, they had an event at Carmicknap Park on Saturday. Really nice event with all the different agencies that provide tons of resources to our families and young children. So, it was a really nice event with First Things First and some of the other agencies that provide these resources. We also, in the last couple of weeks, several of the council members and I met with Congressman Siskomani and Congressman Crane. So, not all together, we couldn't have a quorum. So, we kind of split up and met with the two congressmen. And they shared some of their things that are going on, you know, nationally, you know, they're both, you know, supporters of the DOGE efforts and talked about that they're focusing on waste, fraud and abuse, but to be, you know, patient, that, you know, they're working through all of this and told us if we ever, because we expressed our concerns with funding. And they said, future funding, if there's something that comes up, to make sure to let them know so they can, you know, see, you know, address those issues. So, it was nice to see the congressman and some of you have met them for the first time. So, I'm glad that you were there. And I did want to just, just think that the Police Department Chief on all of the different enforcements, you know, we talked about this at several meetings, that so many people are so concerned about, you know, some of the traffic, you know, speeding on Florence, I mean, on Pinal. And you did the traffic enforcement and we had success with that, we appreciate it. The Thornton Road, you know, with the semis that were coming through, you know, a lot of concerns with that. And so, our Police Department has been on top of that and making sure they're pulling over any speeding trucks and, you know, weight, you know, weight limits, addressing some of the weight limits on those. And then, also did an enforcement on the racing and speeding. We're getting, all of us up here are hearing from, you know, people complaining about some of the things happening in the neighborhood. So, we, people notice that you are out there, you're addressing these concerns. And so, I just want to thank you and the department for everything you're doing with that. The summer internship program, just, you know, we are going to be going, what are we in the, how many years are we in this internship program? Probably about eight or seven? Right. So, that closes on May 2nd. So, if any of you have any family members that are in high school or college, they have to live in, oh, is that right? Oh, oh, they start May 2nd?